Call order 703, we'll call. Uh, Blandowski? Present. Rock and Roll. Students?
Here.
I'm sorry, I'm going to put your names. Can I say that?
Uh, by talent.
By talent. Yes. Um... Lucy Gilbert?
Present.
Jerry Rodden?
Present.
Um, public hearings, we don't have any tonight, so approval of agenda. Motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You good?
Yep.
Public comments on agenda items. Only public? No? Okay, approval of the minutes dated May 7th, 2019. Everybody have a copy? Everybody receive them by email? Yes, okay.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, communication correspondence and workshop. Uh, first of all, we'll welcome our new member Lucy Gilbert to the board. Thank you. Um, and thank Rachel for doing the minutes. So, does anybody else have anything they'd like to add to that?
I do not.
Uh, matters for consideration, old business, um, we've had some new things to discuss with the ordinances, specifically with the signs, and then update on the PUD as far as where that was with, um, as an update, Sean, had, um, we were working with someone on hiatus, and so we did not get an opportunity to, um, go through that with him to make those additions to the PUD ordinance, so Jeff's going to update us on that and then the new sign.
Let's start with PUD, or Lucy should start with the stats with the attorney. We work with Sean Kelly. Uh, I reached out to Al Addis, um, his firm, um, and it was indicated after I sent Sean an email, I got a reply back that he's been on sabbatical as you said for three months, he's studying for his bar exam. Uh, but work had been assigned to two other people in the office. So I reached out to Al today, uh, by email, was not able to get him earlier on the phone, and just asked to get a status of where the new, who was assigned the new Haven stuff, so that I can pick up with them and follow them. Um, I explained in the email that, um, we were looking for them to help us with some additional, uh, additional review of the PUD ordinance, I think we want to crosswalk it with Shelby's, just to have them take a look at the contractual portion, just kind of those last two paragraphs of it, just to make sure that the village is covered and all of the elements they were asking for. I think we're also looking to address a couple of Rob's concerns and what you really relate to the same agreements. Um, and that last day I gave it to them that we probably have some issues or questions from them coming out of tonight's meeting related to the discussion of funding our guy's signs. So, with that, um, I don't know if you want to leave Jenny on the signs, I know there was a clear, one of the, one of the issues that came up, I think, in the last 30 days was a question for code enforcement officer about temporary signs, so I think you made that some discussions?
So we have the signs, what we didn't give any provisions for in what we presented to council was, um, long-term temporary signs. Very specifically Haven Place. Um, another one that we touched on but hasn't really come to issue yet because, um, the time of year is holding. They're not, they're going to see the 14 days, three times two. Uh, I did speak with, uh, the representative from the Little League, who said they usually leave theirs up for a month, for two months, depending on what not, for registrations. And then obviously Haven Place's, um, market is going to be going on for October. So what they are considered temporary signs, and how we want to deal with those within the sign ordinance. The other thing that we needed to discuss was process in the office. Right now, the way we have it ordered, it's ordered that it needs a review by, um, date count before it can be approved. They will look more for a more simplistic process, like it just requires a certificate. And I think that's the ordinance we're correct, Jeff, the way that it's processed. So, if they have to go to Dave, then that means that they need the approval, the sign needs to be viewed, and all those sorts of things, and they actually, the cost is higher. Um, the downside, if they don't go to Dave, then we don't see, you know, the office doesn't see the sign. So, is there anything else?
I think those are the two big issues.
Those were the issues. So, you know, do we want to accommodate these people who have these exceptions somehow broadly? Jeff had presented that Shelby, I think it was, had a, um, a clause in there that's for a freshman front type of service, where I don't know that we have a lot of flexibility with the Little Leagues. I think if we, if, there was some discussion about we ended up to five 1C3s, but that could be any five 1C3s, not just, you know, the youth sports.
It would have, it would be soccer season two.
Yeah.
And then that would just continue.
Right. So those are two things that they cannot solve within our sign ordinance, and as we said, Dan has approached the village, you know what we got to do with those signs?
I have a question.
Sure.
So, what is the consequence, not that we set or in, um, or actually followed through with the consequences this time, but what is the consequence if I'm, that I have a mini club and I put a sign on the corner, of the corners, like the Little League signs?
Dan's taking them down.
Okay, that's why you didn't know. So, that and that, and he's been attracted to that by, or I mean, is that, or he's just taken?
I...
It doesn't matter, I'm just...
Yeah, I honestly, I don't know what his process, where his process comes from, if it's self-directed or if it's office-directed, I don't know.
I only ask because...
And I know there's like a sign, sign process to that too, right? If they...
There could be.
Could be downlying.
There could be, if council, if council has a schedule set for that type of violation, that's outside of the zone.
Yeah. But I don't, I don't know where that stands either. So, I guess, is there, so we figure there's possibly a way to work some wording in to cover Haven Place's market, but it's...
Possibly, yeah.
A stretch, it's like...
The way the...
Sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, the way Shelby Township wanted to recognize that there's agricultural sales, so what they did is they basically said an agricultural sales sign is a necessary sign which advertises a sale thing, agriculture, dairy, livestock, poultry products that are raised or produced at the location by the proprietors. So as I looked at it closer, it's based upon the location. So they've accepted that, saying those signs are not regulated. The only exemption that we have in the sign ordinance, which was, I think, was put in by the attorneys, I think, at the recommendation of, of the commissioner, was to exempt and make an iceland, so that they could have their promotional. I think if we start looking at it, and I'm not the attorney, these are the things I'd like to take back to them, we start looking at it for the basis of a 501(c), or saying that this group can have it longer than all these other groups, then you're starting to get a special treatment of the territory. And then I don't know how you, I don't know how you resolve that issue, other than either everybody either has to follow the rules or you basically don't regulate the duration of any temporary signs.
You're saying those organizations are enrichment to the residents of the community, which made them beneficial, which made them different than something else?
That's, you know, the area probably finds them, that's why it becomes very broad that, I mean, I'm not the attorney, that becomes very broad that definition, I wouldn't become the recommended.
Well, I think something along that lines, I mean, obviously you have everybody at your, but you gotta find some way to support the organizations, support the community, you know? You can't crush them.
No.
Me neither.
Is there...
I don't, I don't, I, I just, this is thought just, if we were to look at other communities, which we have, this kind of just came up, take a look at what other communities are doing, but one of them, you know, as an idea, and this is, this is obviously isn't out there idea, if there was a community messaging board that was operated by the community, those long-term things could be placed. And I know at some point, I was talking about maybe at the...
Yeah, I know.
Entranceway or something like that.
I don't think we're close to that yet.
I know, but I think that would be, that would be a way you could get around that, because then you could have a long-term message that sponsored by an organization.
You know, should you have something? Because I got hit for on 25, 175 bucks for my business law sign, which they took down and left, you know, I think it was a soccer sign. A YSO, and then when I crabbed up to the judge, he said, well, they're a lot. I'd have to go to the... Maybe they have something that works?
And this is, this is a question that we can post to the attorneys, too, because they're working on it, and so that is they may ask, bet on this math before, you know? These temp, the whole thing with temporary signs and that, and this is the Chinese part of it, it says we're finding, you know, the new rules, it's like, I think in the past you may have been able to make those exceptions for certain groups, and they don't be able to with it, but I think now it's tighter, so you can't, you know, can't limit the message and can't give special treatment to a public message, to a, so if one group gets a bigger sign and gets it longer, that's a special treatment as opposed to everyone else being a certain size or a certain duration of time.
Do you know, roughly, when they take down the bowling signs, and when do you...
I talked to Jason, and he said that they're up for anywhere. He said they could probably pull off one, which would be two temporary permits, um, but sometimes they do see if they really want to have two. Depending on the time from here.
Four months.
What's that, about the temporary permits?
Four months.
Two 14 days.
Three.
Per year. Now, I guess I wonder too, but I think this kind of defeats the purpose of having a temporary permit, can you, can we put something in there for a long-term temporary, but...
Yeah, most easily it is, I mean, if they're advertising a month before, plus the time, things can...
Dan's, Dan's having a problem with this, where he's down there, can I get it? He's out there taking down people's signs and leaving out Haven Places, and they're saying, well, exactly what you just said. Right, well, why can't they stay up if mine can? So...
But which Haven Place sign are you referring to?
Any one of them.
Okay.
There's a lot of signs, even...
Because, I mean, I saw...
There's probably about 10 out there.
And they have like wood signs, basketball...
I mean, they do all sorts of rules, how they do it in this town.
Which, I mean, you're at least...
Yeah.
And their market signs, are they up all the time? I guess I haven't noticed any, or is it just the day of the market?
No, it's all the time, and they plan on keeping them up till October. They did come out, up here, which is another thing that we need to discuss, it's probably more of an office thing, but Lori is concerned that we don't really have a permanent process in place for temporary signs. Um, that's something that they're going to have to take up on their end, probably with attorneys, still want Haven Place coming up here for a temporary sign permit. At Dan's direction, there was no process for a temporary sign permit.
The market signs are also tied to the public utility signs, which...
Yeah, and this is, in that regard, from a, from a standpoint of the portion, all of those, everyone has seen them, because, without, without... That's the question, with a permit, it'll be a permit in the proper place.
Right, right.
Now, where did the Little League signs end up? In the right of where, in the paper ones that go in?
They're like those little... Political signs, yeah.
And maybe that process will help with placement, because right on that permit, you can say where it should be placed.
Yeah.
Could a time period be extended, so instead of two, two weeks, do two in four weeks, a year?
But that opens it up for everybody else with...
It absolutely does.
Kuka signs and...
Yeah, but you can't, you have to...
It's, yeah, you open it up or leave it the way it is.
I would be supporting like two, three-week periods as opposed to two weeks, that would cover your sports. They would just have to do two, that would give them a month and a half. I think that's pretty sufficient for, for registration.
They would need two months plus prior. Because most people that live here know when the league starts, when it's going to end.
Right.
And they should figure it out, who don't know within two weeks, I'm just saying the sign.
And then you have flyers in school, don't they?
Yes.
Yeah, some newsletters, and there's more advertising of it elsewhere than just the sign.
And I think for a certain amount of time, the sign's just kind of a lens over the background.
I agree.
Probably knows it.
Yes, I agree.
Haven Place is the same way, they put their signs up, but they also, you know, send out flyers or through media. The sign is kind of miniscule compared to all the other tools you have now.
Right.
I mean, two, three weeks, that's not going to help Haven Place all.
It would just help the sports, the athletics.
Maybe if they rolled a sign out on Friday...
It would, that would require them to take out permits every time they rolled it out.
So our fear would probably be...
Um, you can't pick and choose what, 501(c)(3) is.
I don't know which one's more fearful.
Well, I would not say that, but I think that there's very broad coverage.
Yeah, it'd be a lot.
I'm just going to say, you can go, I'll go here, you can go abortion, you can go anti-abortion, 501(c)(3). I mean, you can really get political when you open up the 501(c)(3) ones, as an example.
That's what I'm trying to figure out where, I was going to add, there's all sorts of policies.
Yeah, there's, I mean...
On the next point, three ordinance.
That's just...
I would probably keep it how we have it, three weeks.
You think three weeks, too much?
I don't know, I mean, I guess we're just, I thought it was, I don't remember the, when baseball started, but I know when I saw the same sack of postings, that was weeks ago.
Yeah, maybe.
And that's, uh, when it's not going to start, end of July, middle of July.
And when does it start, yeah, July, the beginning of July?
So roughly nine weeks ahead of time, it was going to posting. I mean, three went almost, I guess, but two was still cut, I think. I'm following Steve.
Yeah, I do. So do you leave the sign ordinance the way it is, how do you want to address Haven Place?
Is he giving back all these signs that he's collecting them?
I don't know.
I think he did, because...
I'm assuming...
Once came down, and then it went back up. Must have, they must comply with the permit, but it came down at one point, and then they went back up.
Okay, I mean, I don't have to cost these people.
As far as Haven Place goes, I think, um, it should be addressed for Haven Place, any other sign, I mean, just going to have to get creative, I mean, if I opened a business and I wanted to, you know, I'm this corner, and I wanted to attract that kind of town to it, I can only put it out there for two weeks, right? Get a temporary...
Yeah, banners, can you put, is that, what does an ordinance say? Put a banner in front of your building, like in front of Haven Place, said Farmer's Market every Saturday?
Banners, banners are considered as temporary signs.
Even if it's connected to their existing property?
Which they also have. That's before they're up.
And there's a reason they couldn't do a permit and just put the dates that it's there.
Yeah, you're right, Lucy.
They couldn't have asked them to message board a sign to put in front of Haven Place, you know? So they, it's, you know, similar to what the Lions and the, and that's her...
Maybe they have one. So they have a sandwich board, yes.
Yeah, just a little table.
Yeah, a little, which I don't even think is a lot of temporary.
What is, is sandwich board a temporary sign, too?
Yes.
One that you throw off?
It's considered temporary.
Okay, so, and they always have that, they have that year-round?
Well, so some of the associations.
Right, not year-round, but it's...
Yeah.
It's going to be the ordinance, that is probably for the associations to have, type of people to be, or still going to be for...
Yeah, it is probably for social.
So the sandwich board that is considered temporary, even if it is on their property?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to, because I think about, like, rest, you know, when you're in a downtown area, restaurants will have, or stores.
Yeah, they have, they have, like, their menus.
They're, they're accepted and they're handled.
I think they take it in some ways. Which they, kind of sticking it out, bringing it in, just like furniture or upper, kind of, which makes it less...
Present.
Yes.
I would just like Daniel to be consistent across the board, I think that's the best way to support him.
Right, I see.
Yeah, because you could put in a bad word, that's my clear.
If you could, when you're talking with Al or whoever's taking over, maybe throw it out there and see if they have any...
I will.
Roundabout ways. I mean, because it's probably going to come up again with other habits of Haven Place.
It sounds like a liquor license. Community has so many liquor licenses. We come up with a formula for so many, um, temporary signs and organizations. Well, I mean, that, people here might want 20 liquor licenses, you can't have them, you know what I mean? It's just the way it is, I mean, maybe there's a way to go about that, that is similar.
I think that issue would be, it's not a constitutional right to have liquor license, it is to, for public speech.
So, I think that's, that's where we're at, and I think there's really not much more.
As far as the, as far as the issuing of permits and that, I think, if, I think all we're really talking about, if we're talking about a specified period of time, it would just be to have it logged, when it's standing, when it should come down. Um, I don't know that Dave needs to do what we want the sign, I think what's Lori's concern is, will there be, I think it should be, first thing, I think it should be free, the person comes in, they fill it out, whatever they decide to issue, a sticker or something that they put the dates on, put it on the sign, and it's logged here, and then we give them a set of rules. Here's where you can put your sign, just, here's where it will happen, if you leave it up, you know, and you're very, you can be very clear about it at the time that the permit's issued.
Um, just as an add, actually, that came up too, is by temporary sign, we need to somehow say not exceeding X many per property. Because, and I don't think we have that in there. Because there's like five, 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 five. So, if they need six stickers, one sticker, is that how, is that how to do it? I don't know, what's a good number for the amount of temporary signs on a property?
And I was going to say, maybe if he, is a good idea, so that they're not putting 10.
Well, in this draft ordinance, it says a maximum of two temporary signs.
Up to?
Up to two.
Okay.
I'm trying to bring my copy up here.
Yeah, I think that was, because Duncan had, or now I have the logo-sized ones for something else. I'm right, I've got one now.
But the banner, banner flags, the flare flags, all of those would all be considered temporary, so you'd be living up to two, during that duration, if you're going. But if it were to be logged, just a simple database or some gold spreadsheet, right? That could be sorted by date, can't you go out and know where the addresses of the ones that need to be, so that they're taken down, it'd make it a lot easier.
So do we want to stick with that number two, because that's also a problem?
Could we have a, in order to support a new business when it comes in and they need that kind of first up? Could it be something along the lines of a grand opening, only exclusion? That there's an exclusion for associations?
I can ask the attorney, but then you're getting special groups and special, special treatment.
Well, I mean, you're trying to promote a new business, just made a heavy investment or whatever they did here to help, um, I mean, somebody else putting up the same sign, and you know that there's pizza there in the last, you know, 10 years, um, with, you know, 20 signs for that. I don't know, I guess a lot is speculative, the idea is, yeah, they, the attorney. But they come up with a creative way to do this.
I think these questions begin to ask, we're going to ask about.
So all that being said, we're not prepared to study these ordinances to council for next meeting. The hope and goal is for July. But we said our meeting's on Monday, the night before the council meeting. So we won't know until...
What's the date? Probably Monday?
It is, because it's that, I believe it was on Thursday, or second, not the second? So we moved it to eight, did we? Yes.
Oh, Monday the eighth, Monday the eighth.
Monday the eighth, so this is the night we move to the council meeting.
Why do we move?
Um, the holiday, but I, honestly, I was going to...
Oh, yeah, the fourth is up there.
The holiday was there too.
Okay.
Can we decide for, in town, out in town?
Out here.
We already, we dated it when we set it at the beginning of the year.
Oh, I know, you move meetings all the time, I mean...
You have to move.
I mean, they have a majority, the, does anybody not live in here?
Oh, you're not.
And that, I'm 100% sure, but on the eighth, yes. What if we move into June? Well, that's what I mean, give them time to work on, uh, June 25th is two to that. That's on three weeks, so that'd be the fourth week.
So, I think that's...
Uh, the third, yeah.
But keep in mind, until everything is published?
Yeah, we still have 30 days after the ordinance gets approved to council before it can be... Like right now, Dan's kind of in limbo, because he's got two ordinances that conflict with each other, and then this one will mean that we'll repeal those two.
But when you have it on the eighth, is that going to make the August meeting? We're going to blow it by the, by the date right now. If you made a decision on the eighth, it's not going to be able to have 30-day notice to make... Actually, we're almost beat, because the next meeting would be...
No matter what.
Well, we have the 30-day.
No matter what, we're not giving it 30 days.
No, you don't have to give the 30 days, we already have a public hearing.
We have the public.
We're not giving it 30 days.
This is like, we can...
Council has to, it has to be published for 30 days before Dan can start, correct?
Correct, it's 13, 15.
It's not, it's not a 30 days for us, it's a 30-day for it being published.
No.
And in addition, are the PUDs going to be done at the... Because they, the intent was to do one publish of everything, right? Or nothing is done, published, Jack.
So everything's going to be at council's, to...
We can also tell you that if you give those councils, like, before their meeting, they're probably not going to have time to read it, and probably aren't going to pass it anyway.
But is the PUD piece going to be completed? So until that's done...
And we honestly...
I will, I'll endeavor to get in touch with the attorneys, this week, try to get these questions asked, and then get that in the pipeline. So all we're really asking to do, Rob had given us an example from Shelby Township, how they're stuck red, um, I think we're pretty good, I think we just wanted to crosswalk it and then double-check, to make sure all the legal documentation and things are correct, that we're asking for the right elements.
And I'm...
Do you have this?
No.
Well, there was, there was, there was a, as we explained in your, as we gave the meeting, the attorney Sean, that went on sabbatical, and his work was given to other people. I have not got contact from them, so I reached out to him by email, got a notification, so I reached out to Al Addis today by email, asking who it was assigned to, so I can follow those folks.
I, I personally would like to keep the meeting where it is. I'm not opposed to, if Jeff gets in touch with us and says, hey, we're good to go, we, I'll get in touch with everybody and say, hey, you have a date that looks this week? You know, and we can, we can go from there. Just leave it as is, and then if something, if, if we can do it sooner, I can, I'll just give it something like that.
And if there's a concern with council just getting up too short of order, you know, some communities, they like to have this stuff in their agenda back in prior, you know, the real... And I know at the last meeting they, they passed on it, they were looking for a deeper dive, so I'm planning on, he's coming in, giving them a presentation at that meeting, the meeting that we asked ultimately.
Yeah, I just know some of them like to read it.
Yeah, we may be better just going till August, because then, just, you know, assuming that's what we're actually going to approve.
Right.
And we'll try to have everything, what's required for our next meeting.
Regardless of, while when we meet, they're still going to not look at it till, unless we get it done really soon. I don't know that the attorneys can have that.
The other thing that I'll try, I'll try to do, um, this month, is to set up a meeting with, um, with Dan and also Lori, just to talk about his, his ideas for the permitting, or how he imagines that. Because, um, that should probably be written into at least some, you know, take out the language that refers to his own administrative name and person, we definitely don't need Dave calling to, and Lori should... We definitely don't need Dave calling to, and Lori should be the administrator, be of these permits outright at the power. As long as someone's recording the project, that'll be the most important thing.
I'll look at sticker idea too, but then people that want to crowd about it, they can go look and see the sticker is valid and be quiet. Or they can say, hey, it's expired, leave it moving.
Okay, anybody else have any feedback on the PUD or sign ordinance?
Is this, I do. Is this going to affect law sign on residences that are promotional, like schools, a lot of school?
If it becomes political, no, because political, we can't do anything about. If it becomes someone, I guess if someone wants to put a gymnastics program up there, it would be questionable. That would, they would need to come to a permanent sign for that.
What about the sign promotion and promoting the name of schools?
Or merit?
Just a, just a general sign?
Yeah. You get brackets.
If you go to.
Let's say.
New Haven, Mary, New Haven, New Haven.
I've had the New Haven law sign my year, like a year.
That doesn't mean you're trying.
Did you say you're like?
Why don't I?
Oh, we do, we do.
A lot of them are in the right way, which is really.
Wouldn't you consider it?
Well, are we exempting, are we exempting the Haven community schools as an entire team?
In the end, now I get the language, I saw it shot pulled up. I believe the language said as, as high school, as New Haven High School.
Can we, sorry, can we exempt Haven schools 100%?
New Haven schools shall be exempt from the provision of this ordinance.
Yeah, okay.
But that is a school.
Oh, New Haven high school.
High school.
It says New Haven high school shall be exempt.
Oh, you need to take that eye out of there. So what led to that piece being kept?
I'm sorry.
I don't remember whose, whose, where that, whose, whose desire that was came out of it.
I feel like I talked about it, but.
We're referring to the electronic side?
I think that's one of those.
No, because that's not considered a temporary.
But do you, I guess, I understood.
They used to have those. Because currently they have them out right now. I've seen them, while they, I don't know if they're current, but they had a, the, um, they have something up recently for the, the registration for the little ones. I thought I saw some of those for, uh, out front of their school.
I, I just recall that that new Haven school specific to the Boston side. I thought that was part of the discussion at one point.
So if we allow.
No, it's under the exempt.
New Haven, New Haven High, it's New Haven schools. What about merit because they're in the others too?
I think we have to do that. It's a private school though, is that? Unless it's a public school, but it's a charter, like.
So you could say public schools within the boundaries.
Right, yeah.
Is that reasonable, Jeff?
What? Public, for the public schools, would it?
Yeah.
That would, that would be for their property then. Signs out of their property.
Yeah, just like, uh, so not people's yards?
Not people's yards.
Okay.
Not to church.
Which is so limiting.
But I can see.
So Inver Bay, all that stuff, that.
It solely can't.
That doesn't fit. When you're on, recently on our site before, it was commenting, you know, she's.
And often you'll see, like, you know, an Inver Bay graduate lives here. Does that fall under that?
Don't worry, that's what we say.
I'm guilty. Yeah, I got one of my.
Is that under that?
No.
What's your ordinance say?
Sherman, by the way.
He's requested a copy.
I'm actually looking forward.
I want to comment.
Because I can just really see that people being upset about.
What?
I can see people being upset about not being able to put their school signs there, different thing.
Yeah.
Okay, can you throw that out as well?
Okay.
And because we're not going to figure out it here. So see if he can find any way for.
I'll see schools and promotional, uh, or social organizations. I'll ask him about those.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else? We're good? Good? Okay, we're going to move on to master plan, just a brief update on where we're at.
Just a brief update. Last, last month, I asked you guys if you wanted to take a look at section five, which is future land use. How about we do twenty minute discussion, uh, just character areas, just want to get you guys' ideas on some things. So give us something to be able to have staff respond to. Everybody's probably gotten a copy of this one before, but I'll hand it out again, just for convenience. Again, these character areas are areas, not, this is not zoning, this is not future master plan. This is just groupings that we put into the community into last time to have, to be able to have discussions. So you'll see the red areas are commercial, uh, the blue areas are the like light teal areas, kind of little transparency going on. Schools, uh, gray areas are industrial area. The two green boxes or the green black box are kind of our corridors, Twenty-Six Mile Road, Rashid Avenue. And then we have our, our general business downtown area. So what I was hoping that you guys had an opportunity potentially to do was to take a look at this. And take a look at what the future land use portion of the last master plan was. And we'll get you a copy of it since you did, I did, I brought you a copy tonight. I apologize. But just wanted to kind of talk about these areas. There's areas we've talked about because people have been before us. There's been issues related to certain things along the commercial corridors. But just wanted to have a general discussion about what's maybe not working in these areas, what we might want to take a look at. What are some of the positive aspects? Just kind of be able to draw up our discussion to see what areas we need, uh, they focus on. And what areas in the master plan might be okay, because we are just doing an update this time. So, um, let's just start out with a big gray one, industrial. You know, we've had a number of issues with industrial. One of the issues that we've tried to correct with our zoning ordinance proposed change is the size of the lots. Originally, when the ordinance was put into place, the ordinance specified that all industrial usages should have three hundred foot frontage. And as we look at the rest of what's remaining in the community, that makes almost anything that we have undeveloped a whole lot of standards. So we knocked it down to a hundred feet of frontage. I believe it was a hundred fifty. And then also reduced the, uh, the actual footprint allowed to build it. It actually be a little bit bigger on the lot than we normally have done in the past. We know there's issues with the character and looking feel of that area. It is industrial, though it hasn't been functioning there probably as long as, in some cases, as long as the building, in some areas and others for at least the last forty, you know, four, five decades. One of the proposals that I had thrown out there is just an idea, just to start this whole thing off, is it is industrial. It is part of the gateway to the community that you're coming in on Twenty-Six. So instead of maybe denying it, maybe we own it. We talked to one of the property owners there and I said, you know, we'd like to brand the village. Would you want to put a sign up in some landscaping? There was some interest in doing that. But I'll just leave it at that. You can just open it up to a discussion if there's any other comments you guys have had or things you'd like to see potentially done in that area, um, other than changing it from industrial, like we're locked in that use.
Is this a mix of light and heavy we're seeing here?
This is primary, what we're looking at here is primarily all heavy. Where, where it is combined, where there is a mix of the industrial office, that would be, um, the Comcast area back there. That's off of Rashid, was Comcast Drive, I think that, that, that there. And then the other piece that you see as industrial is the, well, it's not really industrial, we just called it out, so they get out, they get out public work yard and the common road up there.
Well, the really light gray in there.
Yeah, right in the middle there.
So this dark gray that's on the left, just under the residential, is that heavy residential against those people's homes?
The darker gray, I'm sorry.
If you go on the left side, it's all yellow until you get to the gray. Is that heavy industrial against those people's homes?
No, that's light industrial up there. That's sturdy grinding and those properties you talked on Roselle, just south of, uh, beyond Roselle, south, that, that's, that's light industrial up there. The entire area is industrial. I believe the heavy industrial stops, have to pull up the building.
They front Roselle though.
Yeah, and just.
They front Roselle.
I was concerned that throughout the heavy residential running against all those people's yards.
No, Rob, that's, that's light industrial up there. And those setbacks for light industrial, uh, the side lot yards are eighty feet. And then the screening and buffering that would be required, it was ever developed, you know, if sturdy, sturdy grinding, or if they're selling property or whatever. So there's plenty of room in there to do the proper buffering and screening.
The dark green park?
Uh, dark green is, dark green is the park, yes.
But those really are parks? They're wetlands or?
In some cases, yeah, in some cases, it's, what you're seeing there is open space and, and undevelopable, uh, green space. The part that runs up the creek here.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that is the park over here as well. In general, comments on the downtown district. I know that in the plan last time, we increased the density there. We increased, um, the zoning to allow for up to a three-story kind of structure, looking more of a traditional downtown. Basically, within the zoning ordinance, we put in all the elements that would support that type of development. We just had to, you know, take off and make that, make that a reality.
I'd like to know what the requirements for fire department are, is if we have a three-story building. Because if we have to buy a fire truck to.
We'll get three-story houses.
Well, two and a half story.
My two neighbors are with two, two, three.
Yeah, but they're within, they're technically two and a half stories because they're inside the peak of the house. They're not full up, you know what I mean? So they, they're qualified as two and a half story, even though it's a third floor, but it's not a full third floor. Because I, I mean, it's good to have that flexibility, but I don't think you're bringing enough money to pay for a million dollar fire truck and taxes and all the things.
Yeah, you know, actually, Rob, I'm looking back at the, uh, the district, the schedule of district regulations. That we, we have a lot of three-story structures in the general business district. I, going back, we increased the density in terms of, in terms of versus where foot, that was allowed there, but it was our, it already is, it already is zone for free. Uh, the height, maximum height of forty feet. We can ask a fire about that. If that's, if I don't know if the last plan or some people drafted this to that cross check, we can, I can look into that.
If somebody builds it, I don't want us to have to come to, to meet that need of that kind of expense. I mean, we have shared services, which obviously jestered to take out things that, you know, what we have now.
We, we can take over that one too.
Or it affects our rates, that number that the fire department so looks at to keep our, our rates at. Is this considered open space?
Is that merit?
Is this considered open space of merit, Jeff?
Um, you know what? It's, I believe those are schools.
Yeah, that's merit.
And I believe that's, I believe merit's got, that merit, it's got two gold notches. Yeah, compared to the, where it would notch as a house.
Oh, there, I got on the map, yeah, that is merit.
Yeah.
And the next review would be in five years, I guess.
It'd be, yeah, it's a, it's a, the, the state requires a five-year update on the master plan. Everything in red is basically along our, both of our corridors, commercial corridors, Twenty-Six and primarily Rashid. Everything that is in there, you see in red, is for the most part all zoned, uh, general businesses.
We need to change that little red part to residential part next to, uh, the Chanel subdivision there where we.
Yeah.
Change the zoning. It is dark.
Oh, yeah. I think that area across from Fountain Park needs to be capped, right? Like it needs a brownfield or?
Yeah, I mean, there's, we, there's been a number of face ones and face twos done there. I know that at one point in time, our department was involved when it was first closed, but.
It's never been, I see it as sort of like a living, it's not as fine, it's not done. I think we can build on it, but only certain types of structures. I think like the concrete floor and nothing.
Yeah, it, it really, it really depends on what part. I'm sure it depends upon what part of the site, you know. Question, I think, the big question is, I guess, is what level of contamination is up against Main Street? And if, if, if there is any, at what level would you have to mitigate it for different uses? Because there's a residential standard and then there's a industrial, commercial, there's different standards.
Does the village own this piece?
No, that's privately.
They did samples down there when they did the water project and they weren't very, I don't know whether they were, are on record, but they, they weren't very.
Even on the very front?
They were, well, they didn't, they didn't, they were, they were on the, they were on the sidewalk area.
On the sidewalk area?
Yeah.
Because, right, because that's what had been where those, you know, I remember when they cut in for those pipes, but it wasn't too far back.
Okay. Because of the seat bench and all of that. I don't really want to step that far around.
So based on that, um.
I'm sure.
Yeah, because I mean, that would be nice, having something to raid in that corner, kind of finish it off for the sense.
That's still owned, isn't it?
Yeah, it's rented.
Well, no, but the, the village owned hotel was, was they divested or something on the line? A village owned hotel. And actually, did the village.
There's some.
Were closed on those buildings.
There's some debate as to whether, we currently own it. There's some debate as to whether we could have claimed to it, but currently we don't.
But how was it transferred? We paid for the demo of all those buildings there.
We don't.
Owned by us.
Are you familiar with that conversation about the frontal, frontal part of that property?
I, I, I have no history on that, at all.
I don't know. That would probably be more at council.
Then, yeah, council or, or, or assigned discussion with, you know, of all, say, now, the village has ever approached the property owner and known his intent is. You know.
The red, which was the commercial area, is that also connect, is it also considered for businesses? In stores and things, or is it strictly?
Uh, what, what, what you're, what, what is?
Just in general.
In, in general, it's, it's general business, so that can be, that can be.
Commercial area is.
It's a commercial area.
Okay, it's not considered commercial, like any kind of business, just.
No, those, that, that, that would be a special land use. Generally, under a general business, that's a special land use, it'd be outdoor storage yard and then to be able to sell those back to the owners.
What's the impact on, on the residential area within the downtown area that is already obviously owned? Does that mean they turn it into a business or, I, I, what can happen in the downtown area for saying it's also in that way?
I'll have to look at the general, but that, that question around, I'd have to, I'd have to take a look, a deeper dive into the general business district. I know that we do, we do allow for home-based businesses.
Yeah.
Uh, but I do believe that we do allow for. Uh, but I do believe that we do allow for businesses in those residential structures along Main Street. I'd have to take a look at it.
I thought we did.
I, I believe we do, but I think it's
Talking about Anne Street, I mean, if someone opened a State Farm office in the middle of the street there.
I'd have to take a look.
It's all downtown.
I'd have to look at this.
Oh, like outside?
Yeah, because it could, that really, I mean, if I lived next door, I'd be very ticked if that was what could happen. And the traffic, they would come on my street, where I got kids versus, you know. Any kind of business, I would say a State Farm particular. Are we giving open, any issues there for the residents that are already which would not have the residential, that's your street like Anne or El. I mean, I understand basic aggression, sorry, basic nature of the, the stations. Where I'm in certain, those streets. Those El, that, I, well, all of those are very residential, you know. It's not even the church anymore anymore, so that, that
Right.
I have vision. That's what you said, empty lot, a division. So many trouble business out of the downtown.
What we do want? The one, it's the one. The, the old church.
Okay.
Has to go to the community, so it's, it's up to a lot. Division. I do have, I am going to throw it out there, just for thoughts, not for debate, is the property, the only property that we have left really as a nutshell that we own in the village is the property next to Amherst. Is the feeling of planning to continue, is anybody on this board favorable of park there versus housing there?
Yes, my backyard, I don't want a park.
You don't want a park?
Are you talking about the side here again?
Yeah.
Big, big park. We'd need not to be all that.
That's the only property we have left.
Oh, that's right, because there was talks about selling.
I was just looking at that, yeah. This, I'm just curious, where people's opinion stand, not necessarily debate it, just to say, it was always slated to be, to be houses, was a part of Amherst. That just didn't evolve and mark current, yeah.
And I would say residential, but I guess it depends on what type of residential, if someone says, I want to buy that, the houses will, because it's a lot of what factor.
Right.
Kind of house that they plans with.
Well
We'd have to come to us, yeah.
It would probably be similar to electric construction.
I'm for houses because I want tax dollars. You know, we have a lot of free property, I should call it here, we need a house, we have two properties and that property, and this is the property. And this property here.
So that's part of it too? Yes.
This then?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were a high.
Okay.
Oh, this is um
Like fifteen acre.
That's all residential, um, multi-family, right on the corner of twenty-seven and Gresham.
Across from Reddick?
Yeah. I feel like that was multi-family.
That, oh, wow.
That's Riverbrook, isn't it?
No.
No, the lot.
Yeah, but I'm thinking of high density was right in here too.
Yeah, that is too. I think they both are.
There used to be a, a parking complex there on the corner.
Of twenty-seven and Gresham?
Where the gas station is.
No, no.
Across street from it.
Yeah, the empty lot, behind the, the porch off there.
Oh, okay. Actually
Wasn't that supposed to be in the mall street, mall that there was not supposed to be continued to form?
Reddick was.
But behind, really? That sliver of land going up, that was residential property. That was slated for um condos to go along with the um Behind Reddick? Behind Reddick, yes. That was a, that was residential strip going up that way. That was um, you know, they, they, they came for the plants, put condos in there. Then also the Reddick, like you said, there's two, there's two more buildings that were to go along with Gresham Avenue. I would like to live in the area, how about in this Clark Street and
Yeah.
The tracks residential and see this as being more of a business use. A strip mall here, kind of a continuation.
You're right.
Right?
The twenty-seven Gresham, the part behind Jax.
Well, that is not a business.
Uh, technically, it's residential.
I'd see that as a business, because you already had businesses on three, actually four.
That is no general business.
It is?
All the way back.
Behind Reddick and also behind Jax, all the way to the
It's a lot of park.
Oh, I get that.
Yeah, it's, it's general business.
I thought, right, there's a sign up there.
Housing here, housing here.
They, well, they, I don't know, for us, yeah.
It's a close.
Now, I do know that it is a council's agenda next week to put together some information for an R and P for that property next to Amherst, so I just, that's potential. I mean, that's information, I, my personal opinion about a park is I think, like Rob said, we have a lot of schools, um, that newer communities all have public common areas. And I, I, I haven't driven by up in one of the parks yet, I've seen too many people there, that I would have to go to a different.
If, yeah, if anything, where's the, uh, pass? New ones FYI from Lennox. Lennox is um municipal area. They just bought five hundred acres all the way around that property to increase their parks, which
Our parks have gave us give up.
Um, um, there it is. And they're, they're planning a new concession stand, bathrooms set up, pavilions. I mean, if anything, we, that's all ours, enhance the park maybe? You know, update it or, you know.
The property there was licensed park, you said, next to it.
Right in here?
It was right there. Twelve hundred dollars, they wanted that property in there?
Yeah, I mean, just maybe even updating it or, not even updating, adding things to it, more of an appeal.
Is that to the north, that they, are asking so much?
South.
Yeah, it's pretty true.
Maybe still there?
Well, it could be north too, because that's all
Well, there is north property too. I thought it was south, I was looking for the
That would probably make those more sense than those smaller.
Is that, that's a home right now and we had a pretty good selection.
Is there water running through that property in the north too?
Uh, see it, a lot of trees.
Yeah, it's, well, yeah, I don't I don't see it.
There was just something I wanted to throw out there. Anybody else on the character areas? Great, loose. Good?
I think you're, because it should rain, you're thinking of it's on the other side. To the west of the east, west, west of Haven, which the east is just woods and train tracks. This is a fifteen acres, it's like my property. The land's fifteen, this is probably twenty-five, I think.
Do you know how many acres that was? Was it forty-seven?
I want to say forty-seven.
Okay, I thought it was much bigger.
But I think it's forty-seven with that
For the area on Park and was a little bit in the back too.
Yeah.
Yeah, how it kind of tapers off to the right.
Yeah, and then it's past the woods, back to the sun.
Close all of that.
All that too. That and that combined, I believe, are forty-seven. But that's not part of the park.
The woods that you're looking at on there is wetlands and can't be developed.
Right.
So the, if you're looking at the Amherst, there's the square up front and then a little triangle in the back and the woods in between that can't be developed.
Well, the darker area, that yellow to the north, that's the area that can't be.
Yeah.
This is the woods?
Yes, that can't be. That can't be developed. There's a little area here and then the square up front, that's forty-seven.
I didn't, I didn't know that was a part of it. I just thought all that was but now that makes sense, that would be forty-seven. Yeah. Or on the tree. But yeah, I'm good. Um, that's good to know. I didn't know that the, eight twenty-seven and Gresham was considered business, so. Nice. So all that around, I mean, to the, to the east and Lennox, that's automatically essential as well. It's more starting to be Gresham? Well, behind the Reddick and yellow back in this, you know, north of the uh, Meadow Brook, or not Meadow Brook, Meadow Creek. North Meadow, so that's, that's all zoned residential too. And it puts up to the DPW?
I don't know where I got this, this is what this thing's only
That's all residential too? Is it residential here on Reddick?
It is residential, we have it. Is it was here? Yeah. Okay.
What revision do you have of that, is that
I don't know.
The upper right hand corner?
It was in my master plan folder.
Could you step up a rank?
I pulled a lot from the house, but
Yeah, I'll take a look too, because uh, for that, I, I got a conflicting matter. It shows that that's all general business back there.
When you look at the maps, I'll recall, anyone else ever coming in since the Reddick people were here? That was Cargo. Who's, who's the guy that runs the townships plan?
Uh, at the time, it would have been Steve Kasson, probably.
No, 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 the guy that runs Cargo?
Oh, probably Santia.
Santia.
The late December almost
Get the whole number, got the whole thing planned out.
The, the December twenty-second, two thousand sixteen one has it as all general business.
So does the two thousand eighteen one on our website.
That's, the website one is two thousand sixteen. Top right corner.
So my upload of eighteen.
Oh, man.
I don't know, I'm on our website.
So mine.
It was only bad.
That's so weird, so mine. You have to show me when you got that, so I can Yeah, but, should I? Where did you hide it? Never mind, I'll talk to you afterwards.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else, anything on the character areas, feedback? And then I guess, if not, where are we going from here?
Where are we off?
With the master plan.
We need to, at some point in time, we need to, we need to push the public into practices in these stories. Um, generally, we, last time we held a, we, we held a workshop, brought people in after we got goals and objectives table. And, um, what I would suggest for next month, if we could do this, that hopefully I'll give you guys a formalized calendar next month. Plating up the rest of the, uh, rest of the course of this. Um, if you would take a look at the plan, and take a little bit of goals and objectives for these different character areas and see if they still make sense. And I've asked this before, um, because since we're doing a re-write of the plan or just an update, there's elements that you may look at. This fits for the general business downtown, you know, change it, or this is something that needs to come out, or this is not going to be contained, or there may be some other things that different groups have thought of in the past.
So I've been looking at some of that, I was going over it, and I see there's some things that are like the resourcing of roads and stuff, and it says long-term. I think that's ongoing. Do we change, like, the short-term, long-term ongoing at this point?
So, what you're looking at, in that table was action items. So what, what we had done, the way this plan was set up is there were we started out with a set of goals and objectives for each of the different areas. So we have residential goals and objectives. And under those goals and objectives, we found that there were certain action items that could be taken. Um, and I don't recall offhand which those were. So what we did is then we took those action items and we placed them in that matrix to be able to give people a quick look, saying, okay, for roads, I'm going to make this, this is a long-term item, and which also, I think, we may have been inversion for this community. Also identified whose responsibility it was to take care of it. So you might see a D C village council.
Yeah, village council and staff.
I'm looking at the residential area, and it says upgrade infrastructure in existing residential areas to encourage investment, including street resourcing, curb and gutter replacement, upgrade water mains, sanitary sewer lines, and replacement older streetlights with energy-efficient decorative lighting. In the end, it says it's long-term, but we don't know about it.
Some of those things have to take with care of. And when we talk about long-term, what we were looking at was, we were looking at short-term is within the life of the plan, five years. Long-term was beyond that, it would be ten, twenty years now. So some of those water main replacements, some of those are long-term items, although you guys are working towards that. I know you guys got a grant to do a number of residential streets this summer.
Yeah.
So, I mean, those are, we're making progress on those.
So what makes it long-term, short-term, or ongoing?
Uh, ongoing tends to be items that are, are recurring, that the village is always doing, they're cyclic, we should continue to go. Where you're, where you're doing something and you're looking, are we getting results, you know, feedback, those types of things. Um, like, one of the ongoing things here for transportation is just to continue working with McCall County Department of Roads. We need to, we need to, adjacent municipalities, M dot property owners, to work to try to pay the roads up. Those are, discussions have been going on, it's been a long-term thing, but it is ongoing, so it's, we put it there, it's ongoing. So, take a look at those, see, if some of these things have come to fruition, let's cross them off, or we can maybe change where they're at. Um, if there's things that you're seeing in any of the, there were some ideas in the downtown that just may not flow, you know. Uh, I think we were looking at developing the park at that point in time, and that's kind of come to fruition. There may be some things that, uh, I remember at one point, I think in the downtown, there was talk about support for facade improvement program. But if there's no money for that, or that idea has gone away, maybe we want to take that up.
Okay.
So, those are the things I think we want to try to identify. That'll make it a lot easier for our staff to do the updates. If there's some really glaring things, like we see that we need to do something different out on Gresham Avenue in terms of um, I'm just trying to give an example, you know, we're trying to tackle signs, we're trying to tackle the character of the area. Um, if we see that we do not want say we don't want car sales out there, that would be something that long-term would be taking, would change the ongoing margins, those would all become not doing that, but just as an example. Um, but remember that with the master plan, the types of changes that we can make could be affected by two different things. Either the community's capital improvements plan, which is the roads, the infrastructure, those types of developments. And then it's the other tool that we have that is the zoning. So once we look at these different areas and we decide, these are the changes we want to affect, then we go back and look at the zoning and say, does the zoning point us in that direction? Because the zoning's the tool that we have to get there, the master plan's to get there. You know, and what we hope to do is, is not write a plan as much as we did with this one, where I think it sat on the shelf of trying to make it work for living document. Because there's a lot of boilerplate here. But if, if we put together an executive summary that we give to village council that really just kind of exists of a series of goals and objectives and this matrix that kind of gives them some marching orders, or at least ideas of what they can tap or assign back to other communities, because there's things that they can assign back into planning permission, where your parks run in those cases. At least, that's, in, 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 in theory, that's how the document's supposed to work. So I would say, take a look at the goals and objectives, take a look at those action items, and if we can pare those down for some new items, um, we will tackle that. And then we can, and I'm going to take that back to staff, and we'll start to compile that portion of the document. Um, as far as the demographics, the traffic counts, the road conditions, um, those elements are mostly done. I'll share some of that stuff with you, that I handed out to the rest of the group, and also get you a, a draft, a copy of the, the original one. Um, I can send the electronic one off right there for you next time. I would also have met with, uh, I met with DPW, I've, I've talked to DPW director, asked him if there's any limitations related to any of the different types of development that have been coming into the community related to water and sewer. He didn't flag anything. So that would be some of those types of things, that we go right into a master plan, if we wanted to develop a triangle, we didn't have the capacity for water and sewer up there. Those are capital improvements we want the, the courage to be made over time, so that can come develop. But I just, I was speaking to him, that this will be a sufficient, as far as the permission, just to tell you.
Well, Roselle lacks water, doesn't it?
I'm sorry?
Well, Roselle does not have
Well, Roselle does, Roselle does lack water to a certain point. Water does come down, uh, to sturdy grinding, and it ends there. I believe there's, I believe he said there's capacity to extend that, but it's, it's coming across twenty-six, it stops before the railroad transport of water and sewer. So for anybody to do anything more intensive commercially or industrially, there needs water, they're probably going to have to
That's just also inherent to paving, I'm sorry. Because it doesn't have water, so they don't have to pave it, and then have to tear it up.
But wouldn't the county put in the, the water and sewer rhythm?
No, that's your water and sewer. No, that's your water and sewer.
So that'd be a hundred percent the county, the county just does store.
We could, there could possibly be the potential of Lenox.
There could be, there could be a partnership there.
Lenox, the other half, the other side.
Well, one, one side would get the sewer, one side would get the water.
Still talking a lot of it. Okay.
Um, another, you know, as far as priority, and we discussed this probably six months ago, was AMED's drive. Or did the engineer, AMED?
Service.
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 When he was here, he said it was mis-tagged as being a good road, and that they were going to change it to a bad road because it's crap. Um, but apparently that hasn't changed in a conversation with Brian I had, and it's still listed as a good road. And that's why it wasn't considered in the grant that they got to pay it.
It wasn't, it wasn't a road that was to be considered, I'm not, I'm not...
No, it wasn't considered at all, because it's listed on the map, it's, you know, whatever they, how all those streets were, we got a copy of it.
Yeah, I believe the enge, the engineer did the assessment, the, the pays or assessment, right? So you're saying it's missed, it was miscategorized?
Yes, it was listed as good.
Okay.
Right, it's the only rapid road within the village, if you want, besides Roselle.
Do you know who the, uh, grant was through? Was it through, was it the MPAT grant?
No, that I don't know.
Okay. The only reason is that there's, there's two different agencies that would be, wants to report back to, to get that rating change. One is SAMPA, SAMPA collects them collectively for the state and then pumps them. Um, but if it was a, if it was something that was impacting a grant directly, that was something we want to talk to MPAT about.
Yeah, let's have the pays realist department apply.
So that would be a fair admission.
Can you ask about that at council chair?
Yeah, we would be more happy to assist if you guys need to connect with the right people, if that's something you want to stress right now.
Is it AMED? I'm looking at the grant. AMED? I don't know if that was part of the grant, so private tribe.
No, it's got pride, it's a mission.
Is that, that was my other question, is that a village general road, is it serviced more than just the, the village?
Yes, there's homes. So, um, just ask, it's not going to be a table question, but I would find out. And it's AMED Drive, right?
It'd be nice if it was a table question, so everybody knew, this is, or are you sending email to the council?
No, probably not, but I'll find the person that would be able to give them direction to have that changed.
Because, I mean, I'm telling Brian, it's wrong, the council should, you know.
Yeah.
It's not like, it's still to be fixed, it's, it's a complete error. You know, maybe that one, the guy who put in that grant, I don't, I'm just saying, it's to be managed, it would not be considered.
I'm not sure about, I can't answer any of those questions, but I will find out.
Okay, anything else? Okay, moving on, uh, to new business, is anyone interested in being a Park and Rec liaison to planning permission?
I just have a question of why, why, what is the purpose of acquisition?
Um, that is the way we worded it within our Park and Rec plan that, and, um, that are, and I know there's been some question as to... Like, we had a DPW position, and there was the school board position, and then the planning liaison. Planning was the ones who we did the Park Rec. So I think that's just why it was there. I don't know that it's ever been necessary for me to come back and do anything here over the time, except for the fact that on paper, it's, that's the way to it, and I should do a Park Rec.
The only reason I ask, because I said on Parks and, um, I remember, it was fun, wasn't it?
You were in school?
Pardon?
You were in school?
I was. And I think that, um... Some of our leadership wants the Park Rec, the proper committee, to kind of plan events and things like that, so... That's why I'm asking, like, is that going to be your requirement?
I'm not sure if, if, if there's going to be a different, no direction has changed since you've left.
Okay.
So I, I did bring it up that I would bring it to the table, if anybody would be interested in that. I mean, if nobody's interested here, it's probably going to be reworded to be a knowledge present. That would be my guess.
Is there something wrong with it? Why do you not?
I'll be, I'll be honest with you, I had the stuff aside just because I was, had too many, too many jobs. That was first and foremost, but, um, also, I'm just not an event planner. That's, that's just something I, you know, generally, I'm just not good at that, so... They just need people on that committee that want to plan events for the community. So if you're an event planner...
Is the school liaison still a position that's coming with?
And so has Marcus's. So it's currently, um, Patima? Lasha came in for Wendy? Marquesiakis liaison to council? Tara Womack?
And Belle?
Belle Rubio. Oh, and, um, John? Um, probably good level, that's correct. Yeah, that's it.
Oh, I, I have had an interest in, interest in it in the past, don't know if I have an interest in it today.
Talk to him tomorrow.
I will call you tomorrow. Is there anybody else who has, excuse me?
Probably we're going to talk about what it entailed.
I mean, there's, I think there's an expectation that you're going to sit at a table, talk about an event, and implement the event, and, you know, get it done. So it's not just saying, hey, this would be a great idea, it's saying, this would be a great idea and making that idea come to life.
Are these events also like the bus trips?
Uh, the bus trips come through to say like, uh, it's a check, just a check, but, um, some of the bus trips have been organized through Parks and Rec. It's like the Tigers trips have been organized through the office, but they still fall under that umbrella of, or just under check. Um, but yeah, some of them have come through Parks and Rec, the, uh, like the amusement park, Michigan Adventures came through there, and I think there's...
Maybe I already said, or...
Fraydenmuth comes through there.
The seniors, um, their, their trips kind of, they have a lot of bus trips.
Well, they kind of come through more of a check as opposed to coordinating. The seniors are organized through another means, so that's not something that they really tackle at the table. So right now, their current, it's like they have the yoga that they're setting up, they're trying to set up a slow roll, and I believe, my guess is they'll probably set up again for walking, um, program. And those are current.
Is there a senior committee?
There is a group of residents who work with seniors, and they have a regular calendar. I don't know that it's...
An official...
An official committee, yeah.
Is there a yoga room, or is that a...
There is, it's, yeah, that's, that's what's currently on the table for that. And River Day, if anybody wants to come on, it's, on Saturday. Are you guys good?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So River Day on Saturday from, I think we're doing, uh, ten till noon with new meats and supper, but it's up, it's up.
You can take, you know, chens, raupe, and, you know, flowers and mulch. You guys can come with us to the Boy Scouts and Marcus, and we get into the...
Maybe waiters for that?
Yes, so much fun. And get right into the river there behind the, uh, the school.
Waiters and up-to-date art practice. Love yous.
It is amazingly one of the fu, I look forward to this day every year.
You do?
Yes.
It's so nice.
It is so fun.
It's really nice.
You're all in the water.
You can probably continue as much as you want, really, but...
Well, we helped one of the Eagle Scouts, um, with pulling trees out of the river, um, a few weeks ago, when, you know, there was more to be done, but it is... The kids just go crazy, they're in the water, pulling out tires, they're digging them out, it's, it's awesome. It really is fun. I mean, you would think it would be terrible, especially me, I'm on my way, actually, I don't care. And you're right in there, and it's, you know, I got my weight.
Yeah, it's about three hundred pairs of layers behind the others, if they want to completely most, but... So, yeah. So I maybe would suggest, if you don't get a volunteer, maybe a suggestion to rewrite that case.
I'm just going to leave it here at the table to say if you have an interest, um, contact, Chris, and I don't know. And I'll leave it at that, so if anybody wants to think about it overnight, or see what more there is to it.
And that's the third Tuesday?
It's the third Tuesday of the month.
Ten, ten, twelve years ago, we did the cemetery, toilets, you would be amazed if whatever plumber was around here dumped every toilet he could find into the cemetery. Whoever we, you know, buy there will do it. Tons of toilets, I understand, some street toilets.
Okay, well, move on to the planners' report, Jeff, did you have?
The only thing that I have, uh, to give you guys an update on is our, um, property owner at twenty-six Greshit, Payville, McCann, Evar, has, um, is in the process of resemiting a new site plan for the site. He is taking more of his property on both the north and east side, incorporating it into a larger complex. Um, we're looking, we went from, let's see, twenty-six with three thousand square feet to, uh, eleven thousand square feet.
Nine?
Wow.
Isn't it going to be a restaurant?
I don't think so.
So he'll rent spaces though?
I think he's looking to lease some spaces. Uh, we had a, we had a fairly, uh, long pre-development meeting with he, um, myself, Dave, uh, and Sermet, the engineer, kind of put them on path as to what he needs to do to get a site plan. And so hopefully next month, if he comes and pays his fees, and says he's distributed to have a running, to have a seat for his guests. Um, we'll have a review for you guys to take a look at. We're doing our first look, this is basically, we're starting at round zero, so this is a completely new site plan.
Nine, so both houses are going to disappear?
I believe so.
Are those, um, houses, are those people, I think renting those houses?
I don't know this yet, I believe he owns both of the properties.
He owns them, and that's not, so he can't really demolish them until releases them?
Yeah, I would imagine, or...
Sure, buy them. Or, yeah, I mean, I just didn't know.
I don't know.
The ownership's level of it? That's often a big piece of property for a price.
Well, the problem is he still lives, it's, will still end up as an irregular triangular shaped block, and then as equals larger, it's part of the, goes up. So it's kind of grows exponentially. Uh, there are some challenges, of course, but from Eric's setup, we're already seeing, as we're already seeing, the vision will stop this catch. Um, I haven't really looked at it yet.
So he's looking at it, so plus other...
Plus, I, I want to say at least two or three other units. Um, and that was one of the suggestions from the engineer, that he modularize it, and each one of them individually plumb, so someone can come in and take one or take two. Um, and the other thing that we told him is if you're planning on doing a restaurant, you have a restaurant space, even if it's a pizzeria, it needs to be in the plan. So I don't know what he's done, it's the parking requirements, and some things changed.
So, yes, it's got to be doubled, right?
Uh, I'm not sure if it's completely doubled, but there's, there's, there's definitely a larger, there's, there's a turnaround rate, and then there's also, you know, for staging, I believe, is there?
Yeah, it seemed like you were like, right there, you know, like...
So I'm sure he'll be back with the forest, with materials, signage. He's going to have some challenges with the county Department of Roads, because he's going to close, um, an entranceway and open another one. He actually had two proposed on Greshit, which I don't think he'll be able to do again. Uh, so there's going to be some back and forth.
Do you actually have a question? Um, I'm sure we've all loved the traffic around that area lately, um, took me, to have now, we get from railroad track to Greshit one time. But I know I've heard there might have been plans to expand Twenty-Six Mile?
Twenty-Six Mile is in the county's thorough kind of passing, two hundred, I would say two hundred and twenty or two hundred and forty foot right of way. Um, I can't say it will ever be built.
Okay.
A setback is there for it, but the vision was, if you know, or if you've been out by Stony Creek, and you know where it's boulevarded in two lanes, they took the right of way for that. The idea was, that all, I mean, that goes back to the sixties or seventies.
I think part of the traffic issue there is that everywhere in that corner goes from two lanes to one lane at some point. Um, I think going north and then going east, it goes from two lanes to one lane, and it just, all the traffic...
Yeah, and you know, as east as it appears.
If he builds there, is the setback going to be enough if they do expand it to at least the two lanes?
It, it's going to depend on what roads requires you to do. Most likely, and I'm not road engineer, but I believe that you're probably making do a some type of deceleration lane. That's going to, that's going to, most likely, like, then the right-hand turn lane. So if you're heading west onto Twenty-Six approaching Greshit, level locker right-hand turn, I need to go into two.
Okay.
So I, I don't know.
I think...
Their engineers will take a look at all those, all those items.
We were talking about, from Twenty-Six to Twenty-Seven there, I, I'm almost wondering if the lights in that time, right, between like four, five o'clock an hour?
There needs to be a turn cycle.
Because I had to work at four, I'm home quick, and there was one day it was backed up. Almost like where that, uh, Natchez Pie is, all the way to, to Twenty-Six. I mean, that's, it's a long stretch of cars, and it was dead stopped because they were trying to cross. I'm wondering if the light...
It took me half an hour to get from the railroad tracks to Greshit, because everybody on Greshit, going north on Greshit was backed up for Twenty-Six Mile.
Yeah. But this all happened when they started Twenty-three North Avenue. People aren't traveling up North Avenue to the north, and they're not going across Twenty-three either way, that's why we got on this track.
And now there's the longer closure on Twenty-three. And I saw too, there was a code rail, I saw two, and it was raining or off to the north.
I would just be seeing the, the results of, of that construction.
Construction. If we put more houses, we might see like that traffic.
Could be a good time to put in a traffic count, like, as this is...
Yeah, I'll see your record, this is my recording, definitely.
Just saying. Okay, um, anybody else on, anything else you want to add to that script you gave?
Nope, I'll say.
Public comments on non-agenda items?
Uh, the village to city committee met last Wednesday, and the MML gave us a presentation, and they left some information on the table. But so if anybody's interested and wants to send a, a copy of it, go ahead.
Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, I really wanted to go to that, but it's cool.
They did a slide presentation, I think it's on those, because it's... It was very fun.
A call from the table?
Um, I just want to say thank you to the group, um, for working with, is it Talia? Is that how you say his name, Mr. Talia?
He's Talia, yes, he's Talia.
Because in the, in the past, I've seen people would approach and, and it was a, no, we don't like it, go come back with something else, or... And I think we really worked well with him and said what we wanted, it was a really good experience, and look at, in the end, it really, it's been about us even more than we thought initially, so...
I was shocked, I was hoping one day to see an excavator just there.
Yeah.
I was hoping.
Just saying, too, I'm too...
I, we started off small, medium, nice, and large.
Rock?
Um, this would be Tracy, has there been any discussion or anything come back as far as the property there behind the Cora Park, the trail that disappeared? We know Walker owned it, somebody else owned, that was being worked on? At council level to bring that piece of property back?
That's a good one.
Um, so I'd like an update on that, and also, I've been pushing Lamar to put the rest of the trail in, now that he's committed to building the homes there.
And Rock?
Well, up from the original, are you familiar with the trail in the Cora Park now?
A little bit from the past conversation, so you want to know if the trail is going to be completed?
Good thing, well, acquired. We don't own it anymore, it's, it's got sold.
Do you know, acquired?
We can own it, because technically...
Incomplete.
Association would have to vote to acquire it, to, to, to add that into the association again. But that...
It might be the council acquired, but it's not the...
Well, it's on tax roll, isn't it?
Um, what, yes. A gentleman in another country, actually, bought a bunch of loose properties, and this got bundled into it. I, the last discussion I knew of is Chris was reaching out to that person to say, can you give this back to us? You have, you can't do anything, and look at us landlocked, but that's the last time.
Kurt Erleany owned it, and then he didn't, they didn't put it in... Erini owned it, and then he didn't, they didn't put it into the master plan, to the core park. So when they gave up property, that would leave it up.
But I, to have the park connect to the northern part, have it go through the school.
Go behind the school, behind the school, so that's a school property we would need to get.
Well, that was discussed when the school was designed, because that trail would go through the school property, which kind of semi is there now.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would run right against the wood line, and then it goes up all the way to Argyle Street, which is the entrance to Decor Park.
Right. Yeah, some discussion will have to happen on that, because who's going to paint that though?
Well, we, it's along the tree, a lot of the associations.
Yeah, I mean, the, the 66 lots that are behind us, those power lines are that, will be dumped into our HOA of Decor Park, so that you could actually just say from power lines down.
Yeah, I mean, or, or, yeah, would be Decor Park, and then up would be Decor Park North, which is only, what, 500 feet, 1,000 feet, if that, of pathway, that would be the northern part responsible. Kind of a lot of roads go through to get.
Well, they're to that point. Again, I brought up all these plans, they're, they're laying there the plans, they're just saying, no, we're not doing it.
Who's that?
Lamar.
Okay.
But I think the council should be pushing them to do what they said they were going to do, just because they don't want to do it anymore. I mean, it's all in this office here, okay, somebody needs to dig it out.
I will add, I will find out. So, we want to know about the Ambed Drive, the pass for Matt, where he needs to be changed?
Yeah.
And then you want to know, has the trail been reacquired, and who's going to improve?
Technically, Decor Park residents are taking that property maintenance.
They are right now?
Yeah.
It's getting maintained already.
We don't know.
Basically maintained by, by us.
Yeah.
But at the end, it would maintain it.
Cut the trees.
There's a lot of, it's maintained probably for some reason. Or have you maintained for so long?
I just probably think that's, that's like a fairy tale.
It probably is, to some degree, I was wondering.
Otherwise, that old four houses in the core park, it took care of it for years, when I was there, they were offhand.
Okay, anybody else?
No.
That's true, lucky gold teeth.
Can I get an motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second tip, okay, meeting closes at 8:00, oh, on favor?
Aye.
Meeting closes at 8:30.
Yeah, I was like, aye.